Okay, welcome, everybody. This is, my name is Jason Marsh. I am the Chair of the LNA Committee, and this is the March 29th, 2021 Committee Meeting. I'd like to start with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good, again, good evening, everyone, and Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Jason Marsh?
Here.
Thomas Whitmore?
Here.
Eric Paulson?
Here.
Joy Cologne?
Here.
Carl Massaro? Steve Lemoine?
Here.
Nicole Satin?
Here, sorry.
Tony Sento?
Here.
Okay, we're gonna get right to business. I would note that the first three resolutions that are listed on our agenda tonight have been addressed in the Finance Committee meeting, which happened just prior, so we're gonna start with Resolution Number Four, and Tony, would you please bring that to the floor? It's Resolution TC 28-162.
Okay. Resolution TC 28-162 be resolved that the town of Trumbull hereby is the, wait, the town of Trumbull is hereby declared a power, pollinary friendly community, and encourages and supports pollinary health and urges the community members to adopt their friendly practices. I hope I said that word correctly, but it doesn't sound like I did.
I think the word is pollinator, but I think we got the meaning.
Pollinator, pollinator, okay. Thanks, Jason.
May I have a second, please?
Eric Paulson, I'll second it. Thank, thank you, and I believe we have Ms. Lemay here to speak on this resolution?
Yes, hi, Jason, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I don't see you yet. Oh, there you are, you're right next to me on the screen, it's like, taktto here. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure, so, um, yeah, so the Pollinator Resolution, I guess, contains a mission statement for the town to become a pollinator-friendly town, and this is something I've been working on for the last four years throughout the state of Connecticut, and we are, there are over 300 towns now in about four or five states that have become Pollinator Pathway towns. So I can describe to you what, you know, the expectations are, but I know there's a, there's a resolution that we'd like the First Selectwoman to, to sign. I, I've worked a bit on the editing for the resolution, I don't know if Mary Isaac has drafted, is there?
I, I think, why don't you just tell us a little bit about the program that you're running, and then, you know, just to give us all a little bit of background, in case those on the, on the committee or those watching aren't familiar.
Sure, probably the easiest thing for me to do would be if I could share my screen.
Boy, that's, that's like tech.
I can do that, I mean, I can do it as long as, um, hopefully it can share. Hopefully you can see my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, just to answer the question, what is a Pollinator Pathway? It's actually a corridor of public and private properties that provide habitat and nutrition for pollinators. And so the idea is to look at our map of Trumbull, and this is what, you know, 300 towns in the Northeast have done so far. The green is our protected property, so if you can imagine, you know, Twinbrooks Park and the Paquonic River Trail, and the blue are our backyards, and so to allow for a free flow of movement across the landscape for pollinators, and it actually works for birds as well. The concept is for people to help to create a corridor that connects the open spaces, and by doing that, people, we're asking people to change the way that they practice their landscaping in their backyards. It's completely voluntary, and so it's municipalities and property owners create pesticide-free, healthy yards and public spaces for pollinators, pets, and families, and so this creates kind of a flow across the town of areas that are safe for pollinators. Pollinators' populations across the country have plummeted more than 46%, and globally, they're down 75%. So for us to turn this around, we have to help to create healthy yards by planting native plants and reducing pesticides. So this was an article from Connecticut Magazine in 2019, there's me in the white. This is the first, this is the group of four that started the Pollinator Pathway in Connecticut in 2017. So we've been doing this for, for four years now. It was a pretty cool article. So we started originally in the town of Wilton, that was ground zero for the first test site for the Pollinator Pathway, and then it has since then moved to adjacent towns all through Connecticut and into New York. As you can see, we have a space here where we belong, and although I've been working on this for four years, I've not launched one in my own town yet, and I'm about to do that. We tried to launch last February, and COVID hit, so we've been kind of in a holding pattern, but this year, we've got a great team together that we're gonna fit ourselves right there in the middle of that map. And so we went from one town to, right now, 237 towns and individuals across the Northeast. Connecticut is pretty saturated now. We have towns in New Jersey, I was on the phone last night with folks in Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket goes all the way up to Maine, so it's just an opportunity for people to understand that what they do in their backyards, if it's using pesticides, if it is, you know, mowing their lawns, continuously actually doing unsustainable practices for their lawns, if they're not planting native plants. It reduces the opportunity for the pollinators to come to your property, and no pollinators, then there's no food and there's no flowers, so the message that we're Pollinator Pathway is encouraging people to do is three things: rethink your lawn, whether that's reducing the size, maybe mowing less, adding clover, as simple as that, or using organic lawn care practices. Introduce native plants back into your backyard, it increases pollinators, and once you increase the pollinators, then the birds begin to show up, and ultimately, you increase the biological diversity of your landscape. And avoid pesticides. Pesticides on private properties and people's backyards are, for the most part, unnecessary, and they're not healthy. This is the sign that properties that have signed the pledge put on their mailbox, and it's, it's pretty cool, they're a great little fundraising tool. To starting a Pollinator Pathway in your town, there's six steps, but the first important one is convene your team. This is what we're trying to do right now in Trumbull. We luckily have a local nursery with Wakeman White Birch, who is totally committed to native plants, pollinators, and organic products. If you go up and talk to David Benjamin, he is all in, helping to supply the native plants that we'll need in Trumbull to get people to plant them in their yards. Rarely would you find true native plants at Home Depot, you may find two or three, but it's really the most local nurseries that are generating these, these plants. We have a nature center, who's also on our team, they already have a Pollinator Garden there, so they're pretty much up to speed on how to do this. Conservation Commission, which I'm the Chair of, we have two garden clubs, lots of master gardeners in town, and we have the Agri-science School, which is, I think, a really great opportunity to, to create a team of people that will help us to drive this in the town. Basically, the Pathway offers a platform for connecting across boundaries and building alliances within our town, and then going across town lines, so working with Monroe, who wants to begin to launch their Pollinator Pathway. And in order to do a Pollinator Pathway, you basically can put pots of plants that are native on your porch or your, on your deck, you can do Pollinator Gardens that may be a little bit bigger for, in municipalities like here at Town Hall, demonstration sites that are, can be bigger, and restoration sites like Twinbrooks. Dimitri Paris is totally on board with having Twinbrooks be, and the Meadow at Twinbrooks become really ground zero for Pollinator Pathway here in Trumbull, because he's got, I think it's between five and seven acres of pollinator habitat that he's been working on for like five years there. So really, it's just a very positive initiative, getting people to show up and become engaged as an agent of change in your town, planting natives, asking your nursery, we've already have a nursery that will provide these, these plants, you know, working with our lawn care professionals and asking for organic lawn care, and asking our town or city to use native plants and no pesticides in the landscape. And so really, the goal is to replace this sign, which you see all over people's lawns, with this sign saying, "My property is pesticide-free, and I plant native plants." So really, it's, it's the secret of change is to focus all your energy not on fighting the old, but building the new. These are photographs taken in someone, friend of mine's backyard, very small property, suburban lot, and she's got a wealth of birds and pollinators on her property, just because she's planting native plants and reducing pesticides. And so that's it. So the presentation, I, I'm scheduled to do a full Pollinator Pathway presentation for the town, once again, on a Zoom on Earth Day. And as I mentioned, this is kind of what I do for half of my week, is launch these pathways, and the other half, I work for the Aspetuck Land Trust as their landowner engagement director. So this is my specialty, the time that I'm using to roll this out in Trumbull is completely voluntary, because I've lived here for 30 years, and after the launch last February, just before COVID hit, we had about 60 or 70 people show up at the library for the Pollinator Pathway lecture. So people are interested, and I think it's just about time for us to do this and say that Trumbull is a pollinator-friendly town. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, that was, that was a great presentation. Clearly, you feel very passionate about this, and it's coming through on behalf of everyone, and thank you for that, that time and effort that you're putting into it. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Lemay? Right? If there are none, are there any objections to passing this by unanimous consent? Hearing none, this is passed by unanimous consent. Thank you very much, Ms. Lemay.
Thank you for inviting me, I appreciate the support on this.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Mr. Lemoine, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-163 to the floor? You're on mute, Steve.
Sorry about that. Resolution TC 28-163. Be it resolved that the submission of a funding application for the Caregiver Services Grant is hereby authorized and identifies Vicki A. Tesoro, First Selectman, as the individual authorized to sign the application, and all subsequent amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the project. Full resolution is attached.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Eric Paulson, I'll second it.
Thank you very much, and who's here to speak on this resolution tonight?
Hi, it's Michelle Jacob from Human Services.
How are you? Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So I believe this is our third year doing this grant, and Social Services provides services to the community regarding caregiver information. So we're currently offering a caregiver support group, we offer educational programs every month, open to the community and communities beyond, and we guarantee, you know, when our caregivers come in, that we will walk them through the process for their parents or for their loved ones, of knowing where to go, whether it's for long-term care insurance, whether it's for, you know, you're just getting started caring for a parent, so from beginning to end, we're there to walk them through the whole process of applications and getting assistance, so. I think, I don't know if our caregiver support group will continue, but we will always continue to provide the information to the community.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Jacob on this resolution? And again, hearing none, I would ask if there's an objection to passing this by unanimous consent. I don't hear any, so we will pass this by unanimous consent. Thank you very much, Ms. Jacob.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Tom Whitmore, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-165 to the floor?
I sure will, thank you. Resolution TC 28-165 be resolved that a labor agreement between the town of Trumbull and the Fire Marshals Union, Local 1303-277, Council 4, AFSCME, AFLCIO, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022, and a funding therefore is hereby approved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Joyce Cologne?
Thank you, Ms. Cologne. This, because we're discussing a labor contract, we have to adjourn for the infamous non-meeting, so someone will still have to explain to me how we can have a non-meeting, but let's not meet in a breakout room. If Mr. Chin would send links to everyone, we shall adjourn this meeting and come back, but we're going to not meet separately.
Hey Kevin, it's Tony, I got, I got a question. Should we do the next resolution at the same time in the non-meeting?
We, unfortunately, we can't, Tony, we have to adjourn and come back, because the next meeting's an executive session, which is a different creature.
Oh, okay, there are two separate things.
This is Dan Shopek, you may want to indicate who should be included in this, this link. I see Fred Green is here.
Okay. But, so, included in the non-meeting will be the members of the committee, the First Selectman, Mr. McCarthy, Dan Shopek, the Town Council. Is there anyone else that needs to be there, Dan?
Maria, maybe, if you, I mean, if Maria here?
Yeah, and Ms. Pyres, if you would be so gracious to join us. So again, let's all not meet in a, in a separate room. Thank you. Okay, so we are reconvened after our non-meeting, and I would now ask for a vote on Resolution TC 28-165. Is there an objection to voting on this with unanimous consent? I hear none, so we will pass Resolution TC 28-165 by unanimous consent. Moving on, Mr. Paulson, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-166 to the floor?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. Resolution TC 28-166. Be it resolved that the town attorney is hereby authorized to settle a worker's compensation claim, known as Brian Orkiz versus the town of Trumbull.
Do I have a second?
Second, Joy Cologne.
Thank you, as this, we're, we're discussing ongoing litigation, I will need a resolution to enter into executive session. Do I have such a resolution?
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session.
Thank you, do I have a second? So we will enter executive session at 8:06, and let us leave this meeting. Okay, thank you. May I have a, is there an objection to unanimous consent to the vote to enter executive session?
And the, the motion needs to reflect who's gonna be present.
Yeah, you need to name us.
Okay, so entering executive session will be the LNA Committee, the First Selectman, Tom McCarthy, Fred Green, and anyone else needs to be there?
Maria.
Maria Pyres, the ever, the omnipresent Maria Pyres.
What about Dan Shopek?
Yeah, he can come too. Dan, please join us.
And, and Dawn is allowed to be there, she is ex officio on all committees, if she likes.
Oh, well, Dawn, you're joining, so thanks for coming. I apologize, everyone, it's very hard to see who is and who is not here on my screen, so I thank you for the help there. All right, so now may I have a vote on the resolution, or the motion to enter executive session? Any objection to unanimous consent on that? Hearing none, we will enter executive session now at 8:07. Thank you. Okay. I think everyone's back. If, Bill, Chin, you want to give me the thumbs up to go? All right, we're ready to go. All right, so we are reconvening out of, we have left executive session, and I would now ask for a vote on Resolution TC 28-166. Is there an objection to voting on this by unanimous consent? I don't hear any, so we will pass this resolution by unanimous consent. Thanks, everybody, thanks Fred for coming, appreciate it.
Quick question, availability for next, for the, will we need to be available for the next meeting?
Dan Shopek, how do you feel about that? I think we're, as far as the committee is concerned, we're good. I don't know if the full council may have any questions, so might recommend that he.
I, I think Fred should be available, what, what is that?
Next Monday night, meeting's at 7:30. That's fine. The only other request being, and I think it's actually to the council, would be, I think you referred to as emergency legislation, we're just trying to get, we're trying to move it along, since we're, we're through the process, right? Is that the expression, Maria?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll make a note to have the council pass it with emergency legislation, as opposed to legislation.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Fred, for coming.
Thank you. Everybody have a nice holiday weekend, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, Ms. Cologne, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-167 to the floor, please?
Sure, Councilman. Resolution TC 28-167, be it resolved that the submission of the funding application to the LOT CIP program for the Spring Hill Road improvements is hereby authorized and identifies Vicki A. Tesoro, First Selectman, as the individual authorized to sign the application and all subsequent amendments, reports, and related documents in order to administer and implement the project. Full resolution attached.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Eric Paulson, I will second it.
Thank you, and who is here to speak on this resolution tonight?
Oh, William Marr, town of Trumbull, town engineer.
Bill, how are you?
Good, how are you? This, this project consists of doing roadway improvements to Spring Hill Road from the Paquonic up to Trefoil. It adds a turning lane and queuing lane in both directions, east and west, to allow for queuing into the transfer station. There's some minor drainage improvements, and along with a trail crossing included in this project.
And it's a, it's a mission for funding, are we looking for 100% funding, or is there town matching on this?
It's a, it's a lots of grant, lots of program, the town pays for the design, and they pay for 100% of the construction.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the, the grants? I mean, improving the turnaround at the transfer station certainly seems to be a worthwhile project, having been to the transfer station many times.
Jason, I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
How are you gonna add a lane there, if you got that little bridge before you get to the transfer station?
It, it goes from the bridge to Trefoil, as I said, from the Paquonic River.
Oh, so you're gonna go from like where the buses are up?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, because that bridge is kind of, it's a little tiny one, but just so I'd ask, thanks, just curious, thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Mauer? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to call for a vote and would ask if there's an objection to voting on this by unanimous consent. I don't hear or see any, so we will pass Resolution TC 28-167 by unanimous consent. Mr. Sento, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-168 to the floor?
168, okay. Resolution TC 28-168 be resolved and ordained that Chapter 19 of the Municipal Code Utilities, be it this, here is the same repealed, and following substitute is in its place, full ordinance attached.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Eric Paulson, I'll second it.
Great, thank you, and I believe Mr. Mauer and Ms. Kurtz are here to speak to this?
Correct, but this is, this resolution adds a Section 5 to the Municipal Code, Chapter 19. This require, this is a requirement by the state, the state has passed down a regulation to the local government, the local WPCAs, to administer this program, it's called the municipal, excuse me, it's a.
Industrial users.
Miscellaneous industrial users general permit. It's for commercial laundries, car washes, pool, you know, commercial pools, and that's people who have to regulate their, their sewer flows and their, their, the content of their flows. Actually, Christine could probably put a little more information to it, if you would, please, Christine?
Sure, so, my name is Christine Kurtz, I'm with Wright Pierce, we're one of the on-call consulting engineers for the engineering department on the wastewater side. So as Bill mentioned, this is a permit that previously was administered and taken care of by DEP. It's for miscellaneous industrial users, smaller quantities of flows, anyone who discharges a certain type of flow or load, a load with, which has unique characteristics into a sewer system, needs this permit. Bigger industrial users still are required to go with a specific industrial user permit, and the, and the state of Connecticut is still administering that. So what we did here is we assisted the engineering department, we took the language from the general permit and modified it as needed to fit into your current code. There's a table in there, you already had a handful of parameters that you didn't allow, or you had a limit on when it came to wastewater. This probably tripled the number, you know, monitoring or understanding of certain metals, et cetera, that get into the wastewater stream. In this, in your particular case, because you don't have treatment in your system, the, the language had to be modified to also notify the city of Bridgeport, should someone be connected that has this type of discharge. There already are these discharges in Trumbull, and those particular businesses have to notify the WPCA of their current application by the end of the month, by the end of April. As part of the language in here, there's fines if anything were to be discharged that wasn't allowable in the waste stream. We did the same, we did some minor modifications to your fats, oil, and grease division of this town code as well.
This permit, it's actually good for five years, they have to renew it every five years.
Okay, is there anything further, any questions? Comments? Okay. Mr. Mauer, anything else?
I believe that's it.
Okay, so with that, I would call for a vote on Resolution TC 28-168. Is there any objection to passing this by unanimous consent? I hear none, so we will pass Resolution TC 28-168 by unanimous consent. Thanks, Mr. Mauer, and Ms. Kurtz for coming. Mr. Lemoine, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-169 to the floor?
Certainly. Resolution TC 28-169, be it resolved that the transfer of ownership of 104, 104 square feet of of 104, 104 square feet of property at 366 Churchill Road from the Town of Trumbull to the state of Connecticut for the maintenance of the COVID is hereby approved, and Vicky A. Tesoro, First Selectman, is authorized to execute all documents required to complete said conveyance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Thomas Whitmoyer, second.
Okay, and who's speaking on this resolution? Oh, Mr. Mauer, you're three for three. Let's.
Three for three tonight. This is a, the state has requested the 104 square feet of land adjacent to their covert crossing on Churchill Road. This is just north of the driveway from the highway garage. It's 104 square feet. They have given an appraisal value of $900.
Okay. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. Any questions on this? Comments for Mr. Mauer? Right?
Mr. Chairman, it's Dan Shopek. Just for the record, this did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission with an 824 application and was recommended.
Okay, for 100 square feet. Good to know. All right. In that, we have a recommendation from the P and Z, and I don't see any questions or comments.
Jason, sorry, it's Tony. It's kind of, is this town property being bought by the town, the state? Or is it vice versa?
That's correct. It's town property being purchased by the state.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. Just to make sure I had it right.
And theoretically, Dan, correct, if we decline to sell, the state would take it through eminent domain, correct?
It would.
Yeah, all right, so we would get to the same place regardless, and we're getting 900 bucks, so congratulations, Town of Trumbull. With that, I would call for a vote on Resolution TC 28-169. Is there an objection to voting on this by unanimous consent? Hearing none, we will pass Resolution TC 28-169 by unanimous consent. Mr. Paulson, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-170 to the floor?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. Resolution TC 28-170, being resolved that Title IV, Sections 2D, 3A, and 3B of the Charter of the Town of Trumbull are hereby amended for the sole purpose of modifying its budget adoption dates pursuant to Section 7-19, excuse me, 7-191B of the Connecticut General Statutes. Two-thirds of the vote of the town councils required full resolution attached.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Tom Whitmoyer, second.
Okay, before we get into discussion, I understand from Ms. Katsky that the full resolution that is attached to the agenda was missing some language, so I'd ask Ms. Katsky to read the full and complete section into the record.
Yes. Okay. Just pulling it up. Okay, so Section 3B, this is Cindy Katsky speaking, Section 3B should read, "The town council shall consider the budget recommended by the Board of Finance and shall adopt a budget no later than the second, second, Monday in May, except for calendar year 2021 only, when the town council shall adopt a budget no later than the fourth, fourth, Monday in May, and submit the same to the First Selectman within two, two days of adoption."
Thank you. So just so we're clear, for every year other than 2021, the budget has to be submitted by the fourth Monday in May, or we should adopt a budget by the fourth Monday in May with the, and with respect to 20, with respect to 2021, that is the.
For 2021, it is the fourth Monday in May, but every other year, it's the second Monday in May.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood. Do we, is there anyone here to speak on the resolution generally?
This is First Selectman Vicky Tesoro. Dan, can you just speak to the Connecticut General Statutes that allows us to do this, please?
You recall last year, you did something similar when during the COVID situation, we were in need of some additional time, or maybe it was the year before, maybe it was before COVID.
It was the year before, yeah.
It was, 2019.
Before COVID, that the charter was amended to provide some additional time. Those amendments were actually, those prior amendments were incorporated into the charter revision that was done this year. What, so the statute that is cited, 7-191B, is the same statute that was in effect the last time the council amended the charter for purposes of changing budget date. So the, so that part of it hasn't changed, so we could, the council really could make amendments until the, until this particular statute is repealed. The council could make amendments, I guess, forever to whatever the existing charter is. What we've attempted to do here with this particular amendment is only to make the change for this year. So that you can see, we've left in the language of the existing charter with budget dates, but have extended the time. Obviously, First Selectman has already submitted her budget, so we, she can't change that. But for the Board of Finance and for the town council to, to vote. And essentially, to allow the Board of Finance and the town council to take into account what money may be coming from COVID funds from the and the various acts of Congress through either directly from the federal government or through the state government. So we would have a better idea of what, what revenues are coming in, so that the budget can be done in a more logical sense. I don't know really what the, what the word you want to use is, but, but just so that we have a better sense of what the revenues will be.
So I'll just follow up with that if I can. This is First Selectman Vicky Tesoro, so that's correct. We do not yet have the guidance from the Treasury Department for the stimulus monies that we will receive this year. According to Senator Murphy's office, that guidance may be coming out later this week, but we have no guarantee that that's the case. So we're asking for some additional time to give the Board of Finance some additional time as well, once the guidance is provided to the, to the municipalities. So a, a conversation could be made with that information in order to go forward with, with the budget process. So this will allow some additional time till the end of April to, for the Board of Finance. And certainly, we hope that that guidance, that detailed guidance will come out within the next week or 10 days to assist in that, in that decision-making process.
Just to follow up, this does not change the date that the mill rate has to be set. So that as far as, we will know at the same time what the mill rate is going to be for the July 1 billing. And then mill rate will be set in June with, you know, again, the date, date is not being changed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions about this resolution?
Jason, it's Tony. He's got a question for Dan, if it's okay.
Go ahead.
Dan, just because there's a, I was out of it for a little while with the dates a couple of years ago. So it used to be April 30th, and then they did the town charter, we moved it to May 10th, second Monday in May, and now this is allowing us with the May 24th?
Essentially, yes. I think the, the dates are based on the, which Monday of the month, but.
Yeah, I look at the dates, yeah, so I'm using this year as an example. Okay, so, all right, thanks, Dan. I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, anything further? Hearing none, I would call for a vote on Resolution TC 28-170.
The amendment first, Jason.
Oh, okay. I will call for a vote on the amendment to the full resolution. Do we, did we actually second that? Do we?
I don't think there was a motion or a second.
May I have the motion to amend the resolution as read by Ms. Katsky?
So moved, Tom Whitmoyer.
May I have a second, please?
Seconded, Eric Paulson.
Thank you. So now we will call for a vote on the amendment only. Is there an objection to voting on that by unanimous consent? There is none, so the amendment passes by unanimous consent. So I will now call for a vote on the resolution as amended. Is there an objection to event, to voting for the resolution as amended by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the resolution as amended passes by unanimous consent. Mr. Whitmoyer, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-171 to the floor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Marsh. I lost it. Resolution TC 28-171, be it resolved that the town council affirms the existence and importance of the Edit Task Force at its mission to strengthen Trumbull's identity as a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community, and to further assist the Edit Task Force to accomplish its mission, the Edit Task Force shall not meet or conduct business until such time as the Edit Task Force has its full complement of eight members appointed by the town council, and at which time the town council also will appoint a new chairman and vice chairman. Full resolution attached.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Eric Paulson.
Thank you. Before we, you know, entertain discussion, I would note that there are three resolutions on this agenda regarding the same topic. I know that there is a lot of discussion to be had on both sides of the issue, and I think perhaps it might be better to postpone discussion until the full council convenes, and at which time the public will be able to comment as well. So I would propose that we pass Resolution 12, 13, and 14 without consideration and allow the full council to take up that, those matters next week. But I certainly will entertain discussions if people feel otherwise.
Councilman Marsh, Steve Lemoine.
Go ahead.
I second what you just said.
Any objection? Okay, so I would then ask for a motion to pass Resolution TC 28-171 without recommendation.
Thomas Whitmoyer, so moved.
I have a second.
Eric Paulson, second.
Okay, is there an objection to passing that resolution with, to pass without recommendation by unanimous consent? Hearing none, it's passed without recommendation by unanimous consent. Mr. Sinto, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-172 to the floor?
Give me a second, Jason. Am I? Think, I gotta get this thing right. Would you say 172?
Correct.
All right, sorry, guys. Resolution TC dash 28, I mean TC 28-172, be resolved that Resolution TC dash 87 is hereby amended that the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Task Force expand to a nine-member body to include a member of the police, Trumbull Police Department, and such member, be it the same, is hereby appointed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Lemoine. As we just discussed, I would ask for a motion to pass this without recommendation.
So moved, Thomas Whitmoyer.
Do I have a second?
Second, Steve Lemoine.
Thank you. Is there an objection to passing this resolution without recommendation by unanimous consent? Hearing none, Resolution TC 28-172 is passed without recommendation by unanimous consent. Mr. Paulson, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-173 to the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Resolution TC 28-173, being resolved, the Equity Diversity, Diversity and Inclusion Task Force shall suspend its activities until such time as the town council reviews its charge. The task force provides a quarterly report to the town council, and a new chairperson of the task force is selected.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Steve Lemoine, I second.
Thank you, and I have a motion to pass this resolution without recommendation.
So moved, Eric Paulson.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second. Second, Thomas Whitmoyer.
Is there an objection to passing Resolution TC 28-173 without recommendation upon unanimous consent? Hearing none, TC, Resolution TC 28-173 is passed with, without recommendation by unanimous consent. Okay. Mr. Lemoine, would you please bring the final resolution, which is Resolution TC 28-174 to the floor?
Certainly. Resolution TC 28-174, be it resolved that the town council of the Town of Trumbull opposes any state mandate, one-size-fits-all zoning legislation, and the ability of any outside housing authority to have jurisdiction on our town's affordable housing plan and any similar legislation that would further overrule, remove, or diminish local control and decision-making related to planning and zoning or affordable housing from the Town of Trumbull. Full resolution attached.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Eric Paulson, I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? I would just like to say that I support the resolution in concept. I think home rule is important. I support the First Selectman's testimony, which she provided to the state earlier this week, strongly opposed to anything that would lessen our ability to govern our own planning and zoning. I find the resolution proposed to be a little bit over the top, but I'm not going to let that stop my support of the substance of the resolution. My, my only editorial on that. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I would ask for a vote on Resolution TC 28-174. Is there an objection to passing that by unanimous consent? Hearing none, Resolution TC 28-174 is passed by unanimous consent. And we have come to the end of our agenda. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Eric Paulson.
Is there a second?
Second, Tom Whitmoyer.
We are adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much for your time. We'll see you on next Monday.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.